Good afternoon. Hope everyone is enjoying this great weather. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number 1A, the approval of the minutes of the February 6th, 2012 minutes.
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? The minute is approved. Policy card on the Number 1B1 Lehman College MS in Geographic Information Science.
Okay, this program is the first of several new master's degrees on the CAPRA Agenda today. Increasingly, what students need in order to have excellent careers is a master's degree. And what CAPRA members have before them today are several master's programs that prepare students for high-level employment in career areas that have many opportunities. The first of these master's degrees is the Lehman MS in Geographic Information Science, which enables students to develop theoretical, programmatic, and applied research skills in spatial analysis. Skills that are in demand in a variety of fields such as public health, environmental science, and resource management. This program will be attractive to professionals working in these fields and who wish to enhance their qualifications. The program will also be attractive to traditional students with an undergraduate degree from a variety of STEM disciplines. One track of this new MS is an example of a professional science master's degree. Professional science master's degrees focus specifically on preparing students for advanced practice and management positions in the field. The other track of the new MS prepares students for advanced study beyond the master's, such as CUNY's PhD Program in Earth and Environmental Sciences.
Any questions?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor, any other questions?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Second.
Second.
Thanks for a reminder.
Discussion.
Discussion. Any questions? Sam said you have a question?
No, no.
This is very well filed program, so I assume there's no question.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Item Number 1B2 City College MS in Earth Systems and Environmental Engineering.
This program integrates traditional science and engineering disciplines towards the overall goal of training students to solve contemporary environmental problems. Similar to one track of the previous proposed degree, now approved, this program can be described as a professional science master's degree. It includes an internship and training in workplace skills such as regulatory matters and project management. The three tracks, which are water resource engineering management, climate and remote sensing, and geo-informatics and geographic information systems, were selected as the workforce areas most likely to sustain high demand for qualified employees.
May I motion to move this item?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Justice Lee Hugo Morales. Discussion on this item? No discussion, let's move this item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries. Item Number 1B3 City College MA in Branding and Integrated Communications.
This graduate program integrates advertising management, creative development, and public relations to promote an integrated interdisciplinary approach to creating brand identity. In the final year, students will participate in two workshop practica that involve working as graduates would in an agency. The program prepares graduates for planning and executing effective campaigns across a wide range of media, equipping these graduates for careers in a variety of jobs in not-for-profit and for-profit organizations.
Motion to move. Second?
Second.
Okay. This is a very well filed program, it's very timely too. I could use graduate from that program right now. We need to rebrand Chinatown. Okay. Discussions? If not, let's, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries. Item Number 1B4 City College MS in Biotechnology and BS in Bi- MS and BS in Biotechnology.
These two programs build on the existing recognized strengths in natural sciences at City College. The programs prepare students for career entry or advancement in biotechnology in a variety of settings, including the pharmaceutical industry, as well as medical and other academic research laboratories. A research component is a required element in the undergraduate curriculum. At the graduate level, the coursework will be integrated with research experience in laboratories performing cutting-edge research. Biotechnology remains one of the fastest-growing fields in the greater New York area, as well as nationwide. Offering affordable degrees in the field of biotechnology fulfills a need for a qualified workforce and provides students with a competitive edge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Justice Morales. Discussion on this item? Welcome, Justice Atkins. Okay. If not, let's move this item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Item Number 1B5 New York City College of Technology BS in Biomedical Informatics.
This innovative program, the first of its kind at CUNY, will equip students with the technical skills and knowledge needed to process the biological and biomedical data used in pharmacology and healthcare, as well as in biomedical research. Students will have a range of career options, from entry-level employment to continuing on to graduate or professional school. The proposal includes strong external letters of support, including letters from chairs of relevant departments at the University of Utah School of Medicine, at NYU, and at Columbia. All of the letters state that the curriculum is consistent with current standards in the field and will prepare students for graduate studies.
So moved.
Second.
Justice Morales seconded. Okay. Discussion on this item? Do you have anything to add? No, okay.
Speaks for itself.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries. Item Number 1B6 Brooklyn College Resolution to Award Honorary Degrees at the College commencement ceremonies on May 30th and May 31st, 2012.
All right, what we have now is a series of resolutions concerning honorary degrees at the colleges, which now come through CAPRA before going for approval to the full board. The first of these is Sylvia Mendez, American Civil Rights activist of Mexican and Puerto Rican heritage, for the Degree of Doctor of Humane Letters. Ms. Mendez is an American Civil Rights activist and recipient of the Presidential Medal of Freedom. Next is Anthony Fauci, Director of the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Diseases, for the Degree of Doctor of Science. He is a Brooklyn native, has served as Director of the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Diseases since 1984. His research findings serve as the basis for the current understanding of the regulation of the human immune system response. Cecil Taylor, accomplished pianist and poet, for the Degree of Doctor of Fine Arts. Mr. Taylor is one of the pioneers of the free jazz movement.
I move all three.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Justice Morales. Any discussion on these distinguished individuals?
They were all distinguished, I agree with you.
Speaks for himself, as far as it's said. Let's move these names. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries. Item Number 1B7 CUNY School of Law Resolution to Award Honorary Degrees at the School's commencement ceremony on May 18th, 2012.
Okay, the first one is Ronald Ellis, United States Magistrate Judge for the Degree of Doctor of Laws. Judge Ellis is a United States magistrate who has dedicated much of his legal career to being a civil rights lawyer and activist with the NAACP Legal Defense Fund and Educational Fund. The next one is Dick Gang Mosineke, who's the Chief Justice of South Africa for the Degree of Doctor of Laws. He has fought against apartheid from his youth, establishing close links with Nelson Mandela and other human rights leaders of South Africa, and eventually being selected as one of the authors of the new democratic constitution in his country. He currently serves as the Chancellor of the University of Witwatersrand. And the third one is Radhika Kumaraswamy, who is the United Nations Under-Secretary General, Special Representative for Children and Armed Conflict, for the Degree of Doctor of Laws. Ms. Kumaraswamy is a lawyer by training, and she's an internationally-known human rights advocate who has published extensively on ethnicity and the status of women.
I move all three candidates.
Justice Morales.
Second.
Thank you. Yeah, this is beyond distinguished, this is a historic figure, yeah. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Item Number 1B8 Lehman College Resolution to Award Honored Degrees at the College commencement ceremony on May 31st, 2012.
Okay, the first candidate is Shirley Rodriguez Remeneski, who's the Chairperson of Bronx Lebanon Hospital Center Board of Trustees and President of 100 Hispanic Women, for the Degree Doctor of Humane Letters. Ms. Remeneski is a longstanding member of the Bronx Lebanon Hospital Board of Trustees, and she's also the founder and current president of 100 Hispanic Women, which is an organization providing education and career opportunities to Latinos. Second is Karen Musallo, Professor of Law, University of California Hastings College of Law, for the Degree of Doctor of Humane Letters. She's a CUNY alumna. She's recognized for her pioneering work expanding protections for refugees and advancing human rights in asylum law. And third is Albert Carey, Chief Executive Officer of PepsiCo Americas Beverages, for the Doctor of Humane Letters degree. Mr. Carey serves on the Corporate Board of Advisors for the National Council of La Raza, the largest national Latino civil rights and advocacy organization in the United States.
Have a motion on that?
Yes, I move.
Second.
Seconded again by Justice Morales. Discussions? Any questions? Welcome, Justice Shoda.
My apologies, Mr. Chair.
No apologies needed. Any discussions? If not, let's move these names. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries. Item Number 1B9 The Graduate School and University Center Resolution to Award Honored Degrees at the School commencement ceremony on May 24th, 2012.
Okay, first is Marian Goodman, International Art Gallierist, for the Doctor of Humane Letters degree. She is among the most respected contemporary art dealers in New York, and her contributions add to the vitality of the art scene. And second is Philip Levine, United States Poet Laureate, for the Degree of Doctor of Humane Letters. He's the current poet laureate and a Pulitzer Prize winner. He's a distinguished author and educator.
I move both individuals to approve.
Okay, seconded by?
Second.
Justice Morales again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries. Item Number 1B10 John Jay College.
Okay, first is Judith Jamison, Artistic Director Emerita of the Alvin Ailey American Dance Theater, for the Doctor of Letters degree. Ms. Jamison is an acclaimed performer, choreographer, and educator. Second is Michael Meltzner, George J. and Kathleen Waters Matthews Distinguished University Professor at Northeastern, for the Degree of Doctor of Laws. Professor Meltzner is a civil rights lawyer and author known for his efforts in the interest of death penalty abolition and for his vision of a race-blind and humane society. And third is Michael Perlin, Professor of Law at New York Law School, for the Degree of Doctor of Laws. Professor Perlin is an internationally-recognized expert on mental disability law, and we also note that he played a leading role in the effort to create a joint MAJD program between the MA in Forensic Psychology at John Jay and the New York Law School. And the program was registered by the State Education Department last fall.
I move all three individuals to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Justice Morales. Any discussion on these names? If not, let's vote on them. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Item Number 1B11 Baruch College.
Okay, first is David Brooks, columnist for the New York Times, for the Degree of Doctor of Humane Letters. He's been a columnist for the New York Times since 2003, and is a distinguished journalist and book author. And second is Louis Capelli, Chairman of the Sterling National Bank, for the Doctor of Humane Letters degree. Mr. Capelli is a graduate of Baruch, class of 1958. He's a philanthropist active in a number of charitable organizations concerned with education, alleviation of poverty, and ecumenical relations.
I will be of approval.
Second.
Justice Morales. Yeah, just for the record, they're two different.
There are two Louis Capellas who are known in the New York scene. This is not the one who's friend of Donald Trump.
Any discussions on these names? If not, let's move them. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, are you okay?
Yes.
Nay? Okay. Any nays? Any abstentions? No? Unanuss. Okay, item Number 1B12 McCollis Honors College.
Okay, so, there is one candidate here, Merrill Tisch, Chancellor, New York State Board of Regents, for the Degree of Doctor of Humane Letters. Chancellor Tisch is known for her long and outstanding record of service in the fields of education, community service, and philanthropy. She's Chair of the Metropolitan Council on Jewish Poverty and a board member for a number of other charitable organizations.
I approve. I move.
Second, you approve one.
Glad to have her, the seal of approval first. Okay. And she's truly the thing, I mean, that's, you know. Discussions? Not? Let's move them. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Okay, that concludes the action items. Item Number 2 is informational.
Okay. I would like to update CAPRA members on two items today. First is Pathways, CUNY's initiative to smooth transfer and increase course rigor for our undergraduate students. We're continuing to progress according to the schedule set in the Board of Trustees' resolution last June, with full implementation set for September 2013. Among the items that are recent advancements, the faculty Common Core Course Review Committee has begun meeting and has been receiving training on the SharePoint system that they will use to process the courses that the campuses submit for approval for the Common Core. The SharePoint system is like what CAPRA uses for, yeah, and this will be used for course submission, for the review by the members of that committee. In addition, the recommendations of the first transfer major committees have been sent out to the CUNY Committee and posted on the Pathways website for comment. These committees are recommending the first three to six courses that will be required CUNY-wide for entry into the largest transfer majors. In addition, all campuses are also proceeding in their work to develop their general education Common Course, which is the first 30 credits of general education. And in the case of the senior colleges, their general education college options, which is an additional six to 12 credits of general education that the senior colleges have. Today is the deadline for submission of the colleges' pathways implementation plans, and as of earlier this afternoon, virtually all of them had been submitted. Each campus is putting its own creative flavor into its Common Core and college option. For example, some campuses are going to require lab science of all their students, some are going to require up to two years of a language other than English, and some are going to require American history, or combinations of these. However, in all cases, whatever general education courses a student takes on one campus will transfer with full general education credit to another campus. There's one more committee with representatives from every college that is looking at some of the administrative technical aspects of pathways implementation, such as how pathways courses will be identified in the course registration system and on transcripts. This committee is also making good progress. At Your Places is a copy of the brochure that we have prepared on pathways. It shows in what high regard pathways is held by some of the leading experts in higher education in the United States. These individuals have nothing but the highest praise for the rigor of the curricular framework that we have set, and for the ways in which pathways will improve student transfer. So that's the first information item. The second information item I'd like to present to you is an update on CUNY's 2012-2016 Master Plan. As you all know by now, I'm sure everyone knows, CUNY is required by New York State to do a master plan every four years, and the next one is due the end of this coming June. The trustees and other members of the community are either just received in their email now, or will by early tomorrow morning, a draft of this master plan. And we are asking for comments back by April 30th. Some themes in this master plan are, first, the greatly increased financial stability that CUNY will enjoy over the next four years, due to planned tuition increases and other financial protections that have been approved by the state. Another theme is that we will be taking fuller advantage of the power of an integrated university, as opposed to each campus functioning totally separately while still realizing the advantages that come from campuses having their own individual characteristics. And three, CUNY's culture and reputation as a generator and user of data for decision-making and quality improvement purposes. We will submit an outstanding master plan to the state at the end of June. That's it.
Justice Sutter?
A few issues, but first on the master plan. Yeah, I was reviewing our last master plan, and there are many goals that we set, and upon reviewing the PMP, I couldn't quite determine if we are satisfied that we achieved each goal completely or partially, and so on. Well, I know it's a lot of work, it would be helpful to us to actually see what we feel we accomplished on the last master plan, paragraph by paragraph, because there are many, some are general, two, three pages on a subject, but some paragraphs speak about specific goals. And I can't tell you, if somebody asked me, "How did you do with this goal?", I actually can't answer that question. And I would like to know the answers in order to comment on the next master plan. So if I could elaborate a little more on it, maybe I could meet you personally and show you what I'm talking about.
No, I think I know what you're talking about. So, I mean, not that I don't want to meet with you personally, but...
No, no, no. I understand.
I do think I understand, and somewhere I have a list that I compiled of all the goals from that master plan, actually, several years ago. So we could go back over it. The current draft does, in many cases, say, refer to the previous master plan and say, "We've done this, we haven't done this yet, you know, and we want to continue with this." But I will look at the list, I will look for the, first for the list that I compiled of all the goals from the previous master plan, and see what we can do to...
To comment on...
Yeah. But I can tell you that that list is many pages of single spaced...
Yes, it is, because there were a lot, this is a serious project, there were many, many goals. You know, it goes, it's not numbered by, it's just page numbered, but really, each page has items that are standalone items, and I sort of would have liked to see every paragraph labeled, so you could refer to a specific, on the next one at least, some sort of specific numbering, not just general goals and concepts that roll from page to page, but, well, yes, that would be very helpful. I mean, I myself can't answer most of those questions in a meaningful way.
Okay.
The core curriculum, the colleges have the ability to overlay up to 12 credits, I think?
Overlay? I don't know.
They're senior college options.
Yeah, over, oh, it's just, we use overlay in a technical way that is not what you just meant, I think. That's why, but I understand, they have an additional, they have an additional...
They could require as part of core, up to 12 additional credits.
It's, well, what it is, it depends, the number of credits depends on how many credits a student transfers in with. If a student is at a senior college from beginning to end, they have to do all 12 credits. If they transfer into a senior college with an associate's degree, then they only have to do six additional credits.
Okay, so those credits, a college could choose not to require any?
No.
They must require all 12?
Yeah, we've had that discussion, yes, with the colleges.
Oh, they must.
Yes. Because it'll cause problems if they don't require it, and the student then transfers again, near the end of their career, to a college that does require it, and they haven't done it, then there's a problem.
Oh, they don't have enough core credits.
Yeah.
Because I thought, some people, some people have reached out to me and explained that the colleges are, the various departments are having tension between departments on which of those core credits, you know, and that they can't come to a conclusion, but they must come to a conclusion by hour, so they will.
Yes, they will. They are. That's why, that's the plans that are being submitted to us.
Right, and the last one was this business of lab for science, being a fourth credit, but no, none of our courses could allow, they all have to be three-credit courses, right?
All right, if you really, okay, the science explanation will take me a little bit, so if you're ready for it...
We can do it in our meeting, or we can...
No, no, I'll do it, I'll do it, okay.
I think CAPRA would like it, because it sounded in a lab, if you don't have that extra credit, you know, I'm a little confused, right?
Let me, let me explain. There are many different options that colleges have if they wish to require lab science of their students, all right? Now, the basic core is 30 credits, 10 three-credit courses, plus an additional six to 12 credits of college option for the senior colleges. All right, one thing that, now, so let's suppose, first of all, is...
Six to 12, is it 12, or is it six to 12 for the senior college?
Six to 12, depending on how many a student transfers in with.
No, but for a four-year, I start in this college, I end in this college.
12, then it's 12. Okay, so, first of all, a college, there are two science courses in the basic 30 credits, one in the top part of the core, which is the required part, one in the bottom part of the core, which is the flexible part. And actually, there's a possibility of three science courses, because student has to take six courses from five areas in the bottom part of the core. So they have to take two courses from one of the categories, because there are five categories, six courses. They have to take two from one of them. College can require that the student do two courses from the science category that's in the bottom part of the core, which would then make three science courses of three credits each. Or they might not make that requirement.
Because there's one in the top part, right?
There's one in the top. Okay, now, course doesn't have to be any number of credits to be a lab course. Any, any, let me put it positively. Any, a course can be any number of credits and be a lab course. It can be three credits and be a lab course, it can be four credits and be a lab course, it can be five credits and be a lab course, it could even be two credits and be a lab course. What, and what is important is what goes on during the class, and also, we've said that the classes have to have three contact hours. You can have a three-credit, three-contact-hour course, and it be a lab course. We have verified this with the New York State Education Department. Now, what some colleges are doing, and because they want to have a lot of science exposure for their students, Hunter is an example of this, is they are linking together as co-requisits, a course, science course from the top part of the core, and a science course from the bottom part of the core, which makes a six-credit course, which is going to have a lab in it, and they're doing it that way. Another college is still talking about making a three-credit lab course, which they can also do. Another possibility is, for senior colleges, they can take a credit from the college option, and they can put it onto one of the three-credit courses in the 30-credit part of the core. Are you following all this?
You're in.
Okay. All right, there's more, there's more options.
Sorry, I think we should go back. Okay, that's better. But, okay, but previously, most, most of the lab courses were for credits in most of our colleges.
I don't know if it's, I actually...
You're explaining that there are, there's a way to get around it, but the norm, the norm...
I actually am not sure of that, because some of them are five credits, and five, more are some of them...
More than three, more than three. There were four or more?
Probably, yeah, probably most of them are more than three. But they can still do more than three by putting together two courses. And then there'd be a six-credit course. They also have, and you see, didn't let me explain, the STEM variant, okay? There is also the STEM variant. The STEM variant says that if a college has three-credit science courses available for the top part of the core, they can also make available courses that are more credits and more hours, any number of hours and any number of credits the college wants, that are part of a major, but are not confined to students who are in that major. A student can choose to take that course if they wish. And if they do that, so say it's a four-credit, six-hour lab course, something like that, right? Biology, yeah, okay, say they take that, and, but they end up not majoring in biology, they major in English.
English, yeah.
They major in English, okay. What will then happen is that four-credit course, three credits of it will go to the Common Core, and one credit would be an elective. So they have, that's another option.
Can, is it, let's stay in the four-year columns.
Okay.
Is it possible for a student to fulfill all 12 credits in science without taking a lab course? And by lab, I mean actually working in the lab.
That is the college's choice.
So it's up to the individual college?
Yes, yes, but, the learning outcomes in the science course in the top part of the core, in the 30 credits, that, for all the colleges, does have active learning in science as part of the learning objectives. So it depends what you mean by a lab course, but...
I knew you were going to, because that's, this is like overlay. What I mean by lab is... What I mean by lab is being in the chemistry lab where...
Yeah, no, you don't...
You put pennies into, which acid is it?
Hydrochloric acid.
Hydrochloric.
Does it turn into a quarter?
No, no.
That's alchemy.
It's the size of a dime, and then you can use them.
That is up to the college.
So it's up to, so in, in essence...
They are required to do some discovery, hypothesis testing, et cetera.
Yeah, but in the lab...
In a wet lab, that's up to the college. The college has to decide whether...
Is that possible now, without that one?
Yeah, right now, there are colleges that do not require it.
So, ask them another way. If I, if I did a survey of our senior college presidents and asked them if they had the option to making, if one course, one science lab course could get four credits and change it to 43, would they say that's a reasonable idea to discuss, or they'd say ridiculous? From the presidents?
I'm sure they would agree with the chancellor and the board in their decision on last June and their resolution that set it at 42.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Let, let me, since I jumped in late into this discussion, let me make two points. One is, most of our students who are interested in the sciences are not going to be involved in this kind of discussion, because they're going to take the STEM variant, for sure. They're either going to be math majors or computer science majors or physical science majors, and they will have the kind of exposure that all of us have had that studied these technical subjects. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, there is no right answer to any of this. You can argue all facets of this issue ad nauseam, but what we, what we need to do is to come to a, a decision, test that decision over a reasonable amount of time, and if changes need to be made, those changes will be made. Whether, you know, if we're going to argue about one additional credit going to change the life of a student at the City University of New York, I think we would say that's an absurd kind of discourse. But if it requires some alteration to the actual framework, I certainly have no ego in this, and I don't think the board has an ego in this, we would make the appropriate adjustment. So what we are, what we are proposing here is reasonable. I think it's going to be, in many ways, a transformative experience here at the university, because it's going to attack two problems that I believe are inextricably linked. There are forces, and I won't say what their motivations are, that are trying to cast dispersion on this, but I think the idea of transferability and general education are inextricably linked. And if you talk to the people, as I do, around the country, at the finest public universities and the finest private universities, they will say to you, "Of course they are inextricably linked, how could they not be?" And that's the approach that we're taking here. We're not taking the sledgehammer approach of asking the state legislature, and I've had pressure from very influential members of the state legislature who have said to me, you know, for years, CUNY has been mired in, in this issue, "We're going to take it on, and we're just going to force you to do it." And I said, "No, you're not. We're going to go through a process here, and we're going to get, in, in a way, you know, to have our faculties design these courses, that we're going to embed learning outcomes." We are probably one of the very last universities of this stature that has not addressed the notion of learning outcomes. It's absurd. Learning outcomes need to be the driving force in developing a curriculum. When I've taught, and I've taught mathematics from pre-calculus up to directing doctoral dissertations, and in every one of those courses, I have always said to myself, "What do these students need to know when they lead this course?" And that's what learning outcomes are about. And we have never asked that curricula be developed, derived from learning outcomes, and that's what we're doing here as well. We're going to test this. As of today, we have a majority of the campuses send in their plans, they're all conforming to the structure. These were all faculty-driven, we have hundreds of faculties that are working on this and working on it well. Yeah, we have a lot of noise in the system, but I'm not going to comment on what is motivating that noise, because I have very strong feelings about this, and some of it is genuine, and I would admit to that, too. But we're going to come forward with a reformation on undergraduate education and transferability. We're going to test it, and if it needs to be adjusted, we'll make the appropriate adjustment. I don't think anybody is omniscient here, that we are all knowing about the exact and appropriate or optimal way of doing it. But I think we are pretty well at a point where this is very well thought out, and a lot of people, a lot of very good people, instead of kicking the dust and saying, "I can't see," we're having people saying, "All right, we're going to roll up our sleeves and let's see what we could do." And those are the ones that I'm mainly interested in working with. And we'll, we're going to get to where we have to get to.
Yeah, the resolution has a, built into it, that you passed last June, it has a review starting in 2013, and then it goes, there's a review of, of, of the initiative each year for three years, and then every three years thereafter.
Trustee Sutton, if you were to ask the faculty, they would all support, I would say, no, the vast majority would support 43 credits with the opportunity of a four-credit science course.
Look, this is what we're saying, 42 versus 42. Can you imagine a discussion of any substance about something like this? It's re, I find it absolutely crazy. But if, at some point, we think we ought to go up a credit, come down a credit, go up two credits, we'll do it.
When this was...
But it's going to be, it's going to need to be reviewed.
When this was before the board in June at CAPRA, I made a motion to change it to 46. The university faculty senate representing the faculty of the university were ready to support pathways if it were 46 credits. I wonder why, as you say, Chance, the quibbling about four credits then and having the support of the faculty, as opposed to now with over 4,000 faculty who have signed a petition, asking for the refi...
They have not signed a petition. I haven't seen any signatures on a petition.
We have signed onto a petition electronically. I am among them.
Well, that's, that's a very different thing, okay.
The only way we can sign onto the petition is to receive the email to our college address, which no one else has access to, and we have to respond from that address. It's a legitimate petition.
That's the way you chose to do it.
I didn't choose, I wasn't involved in it.
Whoever chose to do it, chose to do it.
I think that this is probably not the place to have a discussion about the petition, because...
I agree.
Because there are many questions about that petition.
All right, fair enough. But college senate after college senate, representing the voice of the faculty, have asked for more credits. I think that it would be a tremendous step forward if we increased by one credit to 43 credits, if the board were to, to have a four-credit science course. Right now, colleges are struggling to leave out foreign languages or have science lab. If you take two courses to make a science lab in the way that the vice chancellor described, that's one fewer course among the four courses in the senior college option. It's a very, very difficult choice. I certainly am very troubled by all of this.
Three of the top science schools in CUNY, representing 98% of the research in science, first Hunter, then City, and now Queens, they represent by far 98% of the research and STEM majors, came forward with a plan that lives within the 30-credit Common Core and the overall 42 credits. I think that in itself speaks for the top scientists, the way in which they are reflecting on this problem and came forward with it.
And let me also...
And I think that's, that's, that, that in its own self is a testimony to the depth of science at this university that resides mainly at those three campuses, and they came without any problem at all, exactly with either the way that Lexa said, either combining two science courses or doing a course that is just laboratory. I mean, there's a whole set of variants. And what I'd like to see is, instead of saying, "This is the way we've always done it, let's continue to do it," have some really fresh, innovative thinking. And what we see from those three campuses is very innovative thinking. And that's what a dynamic university should be able to do. Not saying, "This is the way we've always done it, let's continue to always do it."
Let me also give a little history, which is the steering committee that developed the Common Core structure. When they put out their draft of what they were going to recommend, they included a four-credit science course, as well as a four-credit English course and a four-credit math course. However, they, when they received comments back from the campuses, they received a number of comments from campuses that said, "Please do not have a four-credit science course. We cannot mount it, we cannot, we do not have the facilities to provide this for every single student, and what's more, we do not believe that students who are not majoring in science need a, you know, a full-blown lab with the, what is it, a penny in..."
Hydrochloric acid.
Hydrochloric acid. And furthermore, they felt they wanted the Common Core to have more breadth. And when they had those three courses, I mean, it was limited to 30 credits, when they had the three courses with four, with four credits, when they, in their final recommendation, they changed everything to three credits. And by doing that, they got an extra course into the Common Core, so they now had 10 instead of nine, which allowed for more breadth. Because they were concerned, though, that students get enough science, when they did that, when they added the additional 10th course, they added a category to the core, and that's when they added the core, the category of scientific world, so that students at minimum in the 30-credit core get two science courses, whereas they only get one of the other, of other types of courses. And so that was the progression that happened, and that's why we ended up with what we ended, because the chancellor accepted the recommendations of the steering committee.
You have a board resolution passed unanimously. We're implementing it.
But the explanations are great.
You want to stay here all night?
Sorry?
You want to stay here all night?
No.
No, he was, he said he liked the explanations. It's okay.
What's your supper?
Our breakfast.
The things that, that the committee is the place to have these discussions, but one of the things that I find intriguing about this, since I am involved nationally, thanks to the chancellor, is that, again, CUNY is in the forefront, pulling together innovative, forward-looking, 21st century approaches to education, opening it up to as many students in the realm of excellence. So I applaud this, I think it's great.
Same here.
Any other discussions? Not? No more items, right?
No more items.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn?
So...
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
Oh, you lost him.
This is adjourned.
Oh, you get the... Obvious, obvious example, too. This cover says...
But...
I think I have a different... I had a model...
This one is really well... Really, really accurate.
Yeah, see, this one is just a magnet.
Oh, so that you can...
Yeah, it's so that, well, it's so that you can... Mine doesn't have that.